This conference will now be recorded.
Uh, we were, uh, John, Adam, he was having fun.
Ladies and gentlemen, I am Andrew Dawson to hereby call the orders this meeting of the Sedalia City Council on this Thursday of June, part of the 2024-2025 section, but as perceived with purpose and dedication to the values that guide our city, this meeting is now called to order. First item on our agenda is the prayer followed by pleasure of allegiance at Chapel Matson. You have the floor to lead us from here.
Would you stand to join in our invocation for tonight? Dear Lord, Father of all, let us be moved this evening to ask your guidance for any citizens, council, mayor, administrator, staff, board members need to hear about this God to make decisions for the betterment of our community and citizens. We are so grateful for their service and dedication to us. We ask you to protect us all first responders, police, sheriff, fire, DMTs, hospital staff, all who work 24/7 to serve and protect us often at their own peril. We are grateful for the United States of America, our constitutional republic, for so many thousands have fought and died to create and to sustain 24/7 years. We ask this last week to pay tribute to those who, as President Lincoln observed, gave the last full measure of devotion, lest we forget. We ask there nothing to protect you for all militaries who've been serving our great country today, here throughout the world, protecting our way of life of protection without, and more sadly, threats come with him. If now as we leave tonight, please protect us and our loved ones. Keep us in harmony till we meet again, and all this is prayed in the name of our risen Savior, Jesus Christ.
I plead with the citizens of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Robinson.
Yep.
Oldham is absent.
Here.
Marshall.
Here.
Bogus.
Here.
Hiller.
Here.
Cross.
Here.
Foster.
Here.
Okay, first item on our agenda, on our agenda is the approval of the previous session minutes dated May 20th, '24. Do I have a motion in a second?
Motion to approve.
Second. Have a motion in a second. Do I have any council discussion? Have you heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Next, we have the report of special boards, commissions, and committees. We have the acceptance of the Citizens Traffic Advisory Commission minutes dated May 15th, 2024. Do I have a motion in a second?
Motion to approve.
Have a motion in a second. Do I have any council discussion? Have you heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Now, we have the roll call of our standing committees. Up first is Finance Administration. Chairwoman Bogus, you have the floor.
Thank you, Your Honor. We have four items for tonight. First item being read adopting Section 2-833, procedure to disclose potential conflicts of interest and substantial interest for certain officials. This calls for an order.
Okay. Call for the reading of the ordinance.
Bill number 2024-96. An ordinance read adopting Section 2-833 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Sedalia, Missouri, which establishes a procedure to disclose potential conflict of interest and substantial interest for certain officials.
Second.
Have a motion in second for the second reading of this bill. Do I have any council discussion? Have you heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes.
Bill number 2024-96. An ordinance read adopting Section 2-833 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Sedalia, Missouri, which establishes a procedure to disclose potential conflicts of interest and substantial interest for certain officials.
Final passage?
Second. Have a motion in a second for the final passage of this bill. Do I have any council discussion? Have you heard none, roll call, please?
Marshall.
Yes.
Bogus.
Yes.
Hiller.
Yes.
Cross.
Yes.
Foster.
Yes.
Bliss.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Oldham.
Yes.
Yes.
All in favor.
Our second item tonight is Personnel Regulations Amendment, updating our vacation policy.
Call for the reading of the ordinance.
Bill number 2024-97. An ordinance amending the vacation leave policy.
Second reading.
Second. Have a motion in a second for the second reading of this bill. Do I have any council discussion? Have you heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes.
Bill number 2024-97. An ordinance amending the vacation leave policy.
Final passage? Second.
Have a motion in second for the final passage of this bill. Do I have any council discussion regarding the bill? Have you heard none, roll call, please?
Bogus.
Yes.
Hiller.
Yes.
Cross.
Yes.
Foster.
Yes.
Bliss.
Yes.
Robinson. Oldham.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
All in favor.
Our third item for tonight is Personnel Regulations Amendment, addition to volunteer time off policies.
Call for the reading of the ordinance.
Bill number 2024-98. An ordinance adopting a volunteer time off policy for the City of Sedalia, Missouri.
Second reading.
Second. Have a motion in second for the second reading of this bill. Do I have any council discussion? Have you heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes.
Bill number 2024-98. An ordinance adopting a volunteer time off policy for the City of Sedalia, Missouri.
Second reading.
Second. Have a motion in second for the second reading of this bill. Do I have any council discussion? Have you heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes.
Bill number 2024-98. An ordinance adopting a volunteer time off policy for the City of Sedalia, Missouri.
Final passage?
Second. Have a motion in second for the final passage of this bill. Do I have any council discussion? Have you heard none, roll call, please?
Hiller.
Yep.
Cross.
Yes.
Foster.
Yes.
Bliss.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Oldham.
Yes.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Bogus.
Yes.
All in favor.
Our fourth and final item tonight is Personnel Regulations Amendment, updating sick leave policy.
Call for the reading of the ordinance.
Bill number 2024-99. An ordinance amending the sick leave policy.
Second reading.
Second.
Have a motion in second for the second reading. Do I have any council discussion? Have you heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Bill number 2024-99. An ordinance amending the sick leave policy.
Final passage?
Second. Have a motion in second for the final passage of this bill. Do I have any council discussion? Have you heard none, roll call, please?
Cross.
Yes.
Foster.
Yes.
Bliss.
Yes.
And that's all we have for tonight.
All right, thank you, Chairwoman Bogus. Up next, we have Community Development. Chairwoman Foster, you have the floor.
Thank you. Uh, we have three items for consideration tonight. The first of which is the adoption of the 2021 International Code. And, let's see. As discussed during the strategic planning meetings with councils, the city has several years ago adopted by reference certain codes published by industry experts aimed at setting an industry standard for ensuring public safety. The International Code Council, ITC, is made up of certified code and building officials, engineers, firefighters, builders, designers, architects, and other interested professionals. Uh, these experts come together and publish what is commonly referred to as the International Building Code, IVC. These model codes are written with intent that a government such as Sedalia can adopt pertinent sections with amendments to fit our situation. While at the same time, by referencing them as the industry standard, architects, engineers, developers, builders, et cetera, are already educated in them and can rely on them to design and construct projects here, just as they do in other cities and similar regions. These code books are updated by the ITC every three years. The current codes adopted by Sedalia are the 2015 version. So, we already have two versions behind us, and soon it will be three when the 2024 codes are published. Since these codes represent the industry standard and are common among many cities, being so many versions behind creates an undue burden on designers as they have to be familiar with the various provisions of the different versions. Likewise, the insurance industry relies on up-to-date safety codes being adopted to assess risk and liability policies in the area. Once we fall more than two versions behind in the codes adopted, the risk level for all property owners will be elevated. As mentioned earlier, when adopting these codes by reference, it is common to make amendments or even omit or not adopt certain sections that are not applicable to this area. Therefore, our staff has gone through a comprehensive review of the updated 2021 version of the code to see what is different from our current adopted 2015 code. Through this process, they have identified several modifications they have recommended. A public meeting was held on February 12th where local interested parties such as developers, realtors, engineers, and architects were specifically invited to encourage a dialogue and solicit their input. During this meeting, a presentation was given highlighting the differences between currently adopted codes and the updated version. Then, everyone in attendance was given the opportunity to ask questions and provide feedback. Also, some written comments were received. Then, on February 21st, these comments, questions, and suggestions were incorporated into a presentation for council's consideration. During this meeting, four separate motions were adopted by council to modify the proposed code amendments. This action then started the clock on the 90-day period the proposed code with amendments must lay for public inspection. Since then, we've received a couple, received a couple of questions from Diane Simon with E.W. Thompson, Inc., but no suggested changes from anyone. Therefore, staff recommends adoption of the building safety codes as modified from the February 21st council meeting. Note also, these codes can be modified later if council so desires, with a similar process, including the 90-day public comment period for those changes. However, delaying adoption now on the codes that have gone through this process would serve to perpetuate the confusion caused by the current 2015 codes being so far behind, as well as the risk assessments made by those that look at us for the International Organization for Standardization, ratings, the ISO. Likewise, not adopting the code updated, the updated codes, as some have suggested, would only serve to revert back to the current codes adopted in 2015, not eliminating codes altogether.
All right. Call for the reading of the ordinance.
Bill number 2024-100. An ordinance of the City of Sedalia, Missouri to amend Chapter 10, Article 4 of the City Code by adopting certain international codes related to construction and maintenance of buildings.
Second reading.
Second. Have a motion in second for the second reading. Do I have any council discussion?
Just a point of information, if I may, Mayor. I would like to let the community know so that we can be clear with that because there's been much discussion and a lot of concern from our community in regards to this. And we just want everyone to know that we're trying to work the best that we can with everyone. Amendments where needed can be made to these within reason, and it will take a 90-day wait period after those amendments have been submitted to us. So, as you see them, it's not written in concrete. That's what has to happen. However, we do need from our community to put it in writing to us what their concern is so that we can look at it and move on it from there.
Second. Anyone else?
I want to add.
Go ahead.
I just want to add that I have personally called three insurance companies, talked to them about the ISO rules, and their, their comment was, yes, we go by that. And if your house or your building is not under the ISO rules, we just dropped their insurance. Okay? And point, pointing, um, of, of, uh, example is Rick Jaeger. They dropped his insurance on his warehouse because he had blown in insulation on the side of his warehouse. He thought, well, we'll just go somewhere else and get insulation, or get another insurance company. Could not find a way to insure his building. So, he ends up, they tore all that insulation out, put up sheet rock under the ISO codes so he could continue and got insurance. I mean, this, you know, this, this is what's in front of us. Um, I care about the community enough that, you know, um, we need to, we need to get this upgraded because there could be stuff done that might, they might have to tear out to, to get, get proper insurance. Also, I said, well, does the ratings matter that much on the houses? If, if our ratings went up, uh, say 1% or 1 point? He said, no. He said, uh, maybe 1% on, on the houses, but on a 4 million, and David, I use your building. On a $4 million building, you're talking $40,000. That's a big increase. So, that's, that's why I, I'm leaning in this state.
Counselor Bliss?
Well, I, you know, I've, I've kind of advocated it's not the code. The code really doesn't change much from 2015 to 2021. We, I really believe that we need to communicate more clearly, uh, the process and do a better job that way. But I'll, I'll support this tonight. But, uh, I would hope that we make a concerted effort in the near future. We've just added Bluebeam, which is the process where we can submit codes electronically. Uh, it's a great opportunity at that point in time to go through and revisit this implementation of the code. It'll be, I know it's hard for a lot of folks to understand, but Bluebeam is a software package that lets you mark up PDF files so that we don't have to go back and forth with 200 or $300 rolls of blueprints. And so, a change can be highlighted in a, uh, in a cloud or with a marker on PDF, and it can immediately be back to the architect, it can immediately be back to the code official. It can immediately be to the, to the fire department. Uh, but this is the time when I, I would hope that we reassure the public, um, in a meeting or two with a clear understanding, or whatever time it takes. But, but communicate how that process is going to change and how code enforcement will work in the going forward.
I would like to also point out that FEMA will not pay full benefits if we are hit with a disaster, um, if we do not update our code. So, I think that's pretty important that it's spring in Missouri. We never know when that's going to happen, and if something were to happen, we definitely want to be able to get as much as we can from FEMA.
Any other council discussion? Have you heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes.
Bill number 2024-100. An ordinance of the City of Sedalia, Missouri to amend Chapter 10, Article 4 of the City Code by adopting certain international codes related to construction and maintenance of buildings.
Final passage?
Second. Have a motion in second for final passage. Do I have any further council discussion regarding the final passage of this bill? Have you heard none, roll call, please?
Foster.
Yes.
Bliss.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Oldham.
No.
No.
Marshall.
Yes.
Bogus.
Yes.
Hiller.
Yes.
Cross.
Yes.
Seven yes, one no.
Motion passes.
Okay, our next item is an annexation. Uh, at the last meeting, a public hearing was held to hear comments about the appropriateness of an annexation petition for property owned by Lahona West LLC. No comments have been received since the hearing. Now that the required time period since the hearing has passed, uh, council will consider an ordinance to annex a property into the city.
Call for the reading of the ordinance.
Bill number 2024-101. An ordinance of the City of Sedalia, Missouri approving and annexing an unincorporated area owned by Lahona West LLC into the City of Sedalia, Missouri adjacent and contiguous to existing corporate limits of said city.
Second reading.
Second. Have a motion in second for the second reading of this bill. Do I have any council discussion? Have you heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes.
Bill number 2024-101. An ordinance of the City of Sedalia, Missouri approving and annexing an unincorporated area owned by Lahona West LLC into the City of Sedalia, Missouri adjacent and contiguous to existing corporate limits of said city.
Final passage?
Second. Have a motion in second for the final passage of this bill. Do I have any council discussion? Have you heard none, roll call, please?
Bliss.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Oldham.
Yes.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Bogus.
Yes.
Hiller.
Yes.
Cross.
Yes.
Foster.
Yes.
All in favor.
Okay, the third item I have this evening is an amendment to the Paul Bruin Grant subrecipient agreement. Uh, at the May 6th meeting, council approved a subrecipient award agreement with the CSC Property Holdings LLC under the Paul Bruin Grant Historic Revitalization Grant for the project at 322 South Ohio. After further review, it has been determined to be more beneficial to change the scope of the work from exterior brick and roofing to reconstruction of sandstone and sealer treatment application. That's recommend approval of the agreement.
Okay, call for the reading of the ordinance.
Bill number 2024-102. An ordinance authorizing an amended Paul Bruin Grant subrecipient grant agreement for 322 South Ohio.
Second reading.
Second. Have a motion in second for the second reading of this bill. Do I have any council discussion? Have you heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes.
Bill number 2024-102. An ordinance authorizing an amended Paul Bruin Grant subrecipient grant agreement for 322 South Ohio.
Final passage?
Second. Have a motion in second for the final passage of this bill. Do I have any council discussion? Have you heard none, roll call, please?
Robinson.
Yes.
Oldham.
Yes.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Bogus.
Yes.
Hiller.
Yes.
Cross.
Yes.
Foster.
Yes.
Bliss.
Yes.
All in favor.
That's all I have this evening.
All right, thank you, Chairwoman Bogus. Up next, we have Public Works. Uh, Chairman Hillary, you have the floor.
Yeah, I got six items tonight. Uh, first, the budget amendment to ratifying the purchase for a portable pump at the North Plant. The A.G. North Water Wastewater Treatment Plant experienced another failure that needed the immediate stopgap measure to be applied to keep it operational until it can be replaced as planned. The gravity fed pipe intended to move excess floods from the final clarifier back to the press became clogged, and due to the, its location, it's unreachable without extensive expense. This causes the system to bog down and not function properly. Staff and engineers worked to design a solution that involved the construction of a new force fed line and purchasing a pump to move excess floods properly. Rather than purchasing a permanently installed pump and going to the expensive installation, staff recommended the purchase of a mobile pump that will be repurposed after the replacement plant comes online. Since this was putting the, uh, operation in danger of fully violating the permit from the Department of Natural Resources, DNR, Mayor Dawson declared this an emergency purchase in accordance with the procurement policies. Staff recommends ratifying the purchase authorization and amending the budget to include this unanticipated expense.
Okay, so as this is a budget amendment, we have a resolution and two ordinances. We'll go with the resolution first. Call for reading the resolution.
Resolution 2090. The resolution of the City Council of the City of Sedalia, Missouri stating facts and reasons for the necessity to amend and increase the city's annual budget for fiscal year 2025.
Okay.
Second.
Have a motion in second for the final pass, or for the passage of this resolution. Uh, any council discussion? Have you heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Now, we'll call for the reading of the first ordinance.
Bill number 2024-103. An ordinance amending the budget for the fiscal year 2024-2025 regarding WPC mobile pump purchase.
Second reading.
Second.
Have a motion in second for the second reading of this ordinance. Do I have any council discussion? Have you heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes.
Bill number 2024-103. An ordinance amending the budget for the fiscal year 2024-2025 regarding WPC mobile pump purchase.
Second.
Second.
Have a motion in second regarding the final passage of this bill. Do I have any council discussion? Have you heard none, roll call, please?
Oldham.
I don't see him anymore. I, I don't know if he dropped off or what.
He's got his little girl to take care of at home, so, yeah. But he was, he was on earlier.
He was, yes. I, I think he's dropped off.
He's be absent.
Go ahead, mark him absent.
He's, he's by himself at home.
Marshall.
Yes.
Bogus.
Yes.
Hiller.
Yes.
Cross.
Yes.
Foster.
Yes.
Bliss.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Seven yes, one absent.
Motion passes. Now, we'll call for the reading of the second ordinance in relation to this matter.
Bill number 2024-104. An ordinance ratifying the purchase of a portable diesel pump for the North Wastewater Treatment Plant.
Second reading.
Second.
Have a motion in second for the second reading of this bill. Do I have any council discussion? Have you heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes.
Bill number 2024-104. An ordinance ratifying the purchase of a portable diesel pump for the North Wastewater Treatment Plant.
Final pass.
Second.
Have a motion in second for the final passage of this bill. Do I have any council discussion? Have you heard none, roll call, please?
Marshall.
Yes.
Bogus.
Yes.
Hiller.
Yeah.
Cross.
Yes.
Foster.
Yes.
Bliss.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
And Oldham is absent. Seven yes, one absent.
Okay, second item tonight is preliminary design build agreement for North and Central Plants, Burns and McDowell, $572,851. Council heard during the special work session May 8th from the engineers working through the plant to replace the failing North Wastewater Treatment Plant in accordance with the presentation discussion with council. An agreement has been pulled together to further develop the facility plan and obtain DNR's approval on such plan in accordance with the administrative order on consent with DNR in the later than March 25, 2025.
Okay, call for the reading of the ordinance.
Bill number 2024-105. An ordinance authorizing a preliminary design build agreement for North and Central Wastewater Treatment Plant's facility.
Second reading.
Second. Have a motion in second for the second reading of this bill. Do I have any council discussion? Also, may I point out, we have Cliff Kate here from Burns and McDonald for anybody that does have any questions of them.
There he is.
Yeah, he's right back there. Right back there. All right, have you heard none? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes.
Bill number 2024-105, an ordinance authorizing a preliminary design build agreement for North and Central Wastewater Treatment Plant's facility plan.
Final passage?
Second.
I have a motion of second for the final passage of this bill, do I have any council discussion? Have you heard none? Roll call please.
Bogus?
Yes.
Hiller?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Bliss?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Oldham is absent, and Marshall?
Yes.
Seven yes, one absent.
Motion passes.
Third item tonight is agreement paving project with the Soudae 200 School District. City staff has worked together with the management of the Soudae 200 School District to explore opportunities to share resources and expertise to better serve our common customers. Recognizing that the city owns paving equipment that has excess capacity and that the school district has the need for resourcing of parking lots from time to time, then often the user of these parking lots are also citizens of Soudae. The idea was born to enter into an intergovernmental agreement to save the common taxpayers' funds overall. Therefore, such an agreement is negotiated with the district. Will work with the city staff to find specifics project, and upon completion will reimburse the city only the insurable cost to complete the project, thereby saving the district sufficient dollars while the city is utilizing otherwise highly equipment to provide more benefits to the citizen. Staff recommends approval of this agreement.
All right, call for the reading of the ordinance?
Bill number 2024-106, an ordinance authorizing a paving projects agreement binding between Soudae Number 200 School District and the City of Soudae, Missouri.
Second reading?
Second.
A motion of second for the second reading of this bill, do I have any council discussion? Have you heard none? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes.
Bill number 2024-106, an ordinance authorizing a paving projects agreement binding between Soudae Number 200 School District and the City of Soudae, Missouri.
Final passage?
Second.
I have a motion of second for the final passage of this bill, do I have any council discussion? Have you heard none? Roll call please.
Hiller?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Bliss?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Oldham is absent. Marshall?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Seven yes, one absent.
My fourth item tonight is Prairie Hollow Water and Sewer Main Extension. Burns and McDowell, I believe are going to be doing that, so we need an ordinance.
All right, call for reading the ordinance?
Bill number 2024-107, an ordinance authorizing amendment number two to task order number one for Prairie Hollow Water and Sewer Main Extension.
Second reading?
Second.
I have a motion of second for the second reading of this bill, do I have any council discussion? Have you heard none? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes.
Bill number 2024-107, an ordinance authorizing amendment number two, task order number one, Prairie Hollow Water and Sewer Main Extension.
Final passage, this is second.
A motion in the second for the final passage of this bill, do I have any council discussion? Have you heard none? Roll call please.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Bliss?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Oldham is absent. Marshall?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Hiller?
Yes.
Seven yes, one absent.
Motion passes.
My fifth item is a budget amendment and bid on a trommel screen. For several years, the city has utilized the operation to recycle yard waste and biological waste to create compost that can be used as fertilizer for gardens and farm fields. If not for this operation, the sludge that comes off the sewer treatment process would have to be disposed of at a significant cost. In other words, we'd have to haul it to landfill. Likewise, dealing with the yard waste from throughout the city would create an additional disposal burden. By combining these two waste products, we produce a useful product that is also environmentally friendly. Also, by selling this product, the sewer system fund recovers some of the costs of producing the material, thereby further reducing the financial burden that is passed on to the taxpayers. Over the last several years of operating the facility, main piece of equipment has become worn out and most- more costly to repair it than it replace. The load of the operation has also been dramatically increased recently with the upgrade project of the central wastewater treatment plant. The equipment failure was unexpected during the budget processing. However, delaying the replacement puts the progress in the central plant upgrade project at risk. Therefore, staff recommends approval of the purchase of the replacement equipment along with the regulated-related budget amendment.
Okay, so we have a resolution and two ordinances in relation to the purchase of this trommel screen. We'll start with the resolution. Call for the reading of the resolution first.
Resolution 2091, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Soudae, Missouri stating facts and reasons for the necessity to amend and increase the city's annual budget for fiscal year 2025.
Motion to approve?
Second.
I have a motion in a second to approve the resolution, do I have any council discussion? Have you heard none? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Now we'll call for the reading of the first ordinance.
Bill number 2024-108, an ordinance amending the budget for the fiscal year 2024-2025 regarding WPC Trommel Screen Purchase.
Second reading?
Second.
A motion of second for the second reading of this bill, do I have any council discussion? Have you heard none? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes.
Bill number 2024-108, an ordinance amending the budget for the fiscal year 2024-2025 regarding WPC Trommel Screen Purchase.
Final passage?
Second.
I have a motion of second for the final passage of this bill, do I have any council discussion? Have you heard none? Roll call please.
Foster?
Yes.
Bliss?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Oldham is absent. Marshall?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Hiller?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Seven yes, one absent.
All right, motion passes. Now we'll call for the reading of the second ordinance in relation to this matter.
Bill number 2024-109, an ordinance approving and accepting a bid for the purchase of a trommel screen for the compost facility.
Second reading?
Second.
I have a motion of second for the second reading of this bill, do I have any council discussion? Have you heard none? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes.
Bill number 2024-109, an ordinance approving and accepting a bid for the purchase of a trommel screen for the compost facility.
Final passage?
Second.
I have a motion of second for the final passage of this bill, do I have any council discussion? Have you heard none? Roll call please.
Bliss?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Oldham is absent. Marshall?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Hiller?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Seven yes, one absent.
Motion passes.
Okay, my final item tonight is a bid for a 2024 5500 Series Ram Water Department Truck from WK Chrysler Dodge Jeep Ram. The bid came in at $83,310. This is for a two-ton truck with a utility bed to pull our trailers with the new skid loaders and the equipment. Very badly needed, but we are $16,000 under the budget. It was budgeted this year to be purchased, and it came in $16,000 under the budget, thanks to WK.
All right, call for reading the ordinance?
Bill number 2024-110, an ordinance approving and accepting a bid for purchase of a 2024 Ram 5500 to be utilized by the water department.
Second reading?
Second.
I have a motion of second for the second reading of this bill, do I have any council discussion? Have you heard none? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes.
Bill number 2024-110, an ordinance approving and accepting a bid for purchase of a 2024 Ram 5500 to be utilized by the water department.
Okay, second. I have a motion of second for the final passage of this bill, do I have any council discussion? Have you heard none? Roll call please.
Robinson?
Yes.
Oldham is absent. Marshall?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Hiller?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Bliss?
Yes.
Seven yes, one absent.
Thank you, motion passes.
That's all I have, sir.
Thank you Chairman Hiller. Next we have Public Safety, Chairman Robinson, you have the floor.
Thank you. The Public Safety Committee and the city staff have spent considerable time considering both the site and members of new fire stations, trying to balance community safety and the reality of what the community can support financially. The conversation has been complicated further by the temporary closure of the Washington Street Viaduct. In response to that closure, the city staff has put into effect a plan using, including use of cameras and temporary placement of fire vehicles across the track that alleviates the immediate problem of trains blocking access. This is an excellent solution, probably providing quicker response time than when the viaduct is open. The replacement of the viaduct is a long-term project that is out of our direct control and is a straw horse in the discussion of where to place the new station, which needs to be based on affordability and safety. The Public Safety Committee's unanimous consensus is that we should proceed with a two-station model, building the new station and training center behind the current central station. This way, the financing and design can be combined with the new aquatic facility and bowling alley, thereby saving considerable money. Building a new station anywhere else uncovers a broader area than it covers in such space in the construction of the third station. This would require a tax increase, which we do not believe the community would support at this time. The Public Safety Committee therefore makes the motion that we proceed with this plan.
Okay, so I have a motion on the floor to recommend this plan. Do I have a second?
Yeah.
I have a motion of second. Now do I have any council discussion regarding the plan put forward by the Public Safety Committee?
Mayor, I would just like to make sure that we all understand that the community north of the railroad tracks will be taken care of, will be covered with this plan. Correct, Chief?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Do I have any other council discussion regarding this plan forward? One once, going twice? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, we will move forward. That gives us some direction, and we really appreciate it. And thank you Chairman Robinson. Let's see. Now we'll go and move on to the liquor licenses. Call for the reading of the liquor licenses?
We have one renewal tonight. Kathy Getz doing business is break time number 3083 at 808 East Broadway for packaged liquor.
Motion to approve?
Second. I have a motion to approve in a second. Do I have any council discussion regarding the approval of this liquor license? Have you heard none? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Now we have any miscellaneous items from the city council or city administrator? Do you have any?
We had some issues with the tornado sirens and a couple wards, and I just would kind of like to chat a little bit about that and perhaps make a motion to have staff look into that a little further. I know for sure in fourth ward and I think second ward had some issues with tornado sirens. And I know fourth ward, multiple times, we've had a lot of action in the weather this season. And I just think it would be very crucial that we look into what the issues are and why doesn't seem like they're all working. And then perhaps maybe we need to look at placement as well. When I pulled the map to look to see where all of the sirens were placed, there's not any that are close to the high school, and that's very concerning for me. So I would like to make a motion that staff looks further into tornado sirens, please.
I agree with Councilwoman Foster. I have found out that the siren, tornado siren that was in Hubbard Park has been removed. I would like to see that put back in Hubbard Park because that did help with the sound of individuals being able to hear it. The placement of where it is right now, it's very difficult for us to hear it in certain areas on the north side.
Chief Earland, did you have a point of information you'd like to offer?
Chief, your point, Councilwoman. I have reached out to email and frisked. We are going to be doing a tornado siren. That's one day of news. Fire departments are going to be deploying its crews and inspectors all through the city with tornado sirens. I doubt if some of the tornado sirens are actually sitting in the base to see if those tornado sirens are actually putting on a death notice if you're done. I sent an email earlier in the week to the city administrator board about the possibility of adding tornado sirens at the high schools, at the Hubbard Park, and then basically the downtown board. If you would like the actual map of what the tornado sirens or estimated circle are, I've sent that to you.
I think I have that.
If we're sure of the circle around it, whether.
Yes. If you know we had, they were not working. Some were not working, so that's.
Yeah, would you bring that back for a- we'll talk about it, but bring it back for a presentation? I think it would be.
Sure, sure. I just wanted to say we're going to fire department and that the police department so we are going to be deploying the force to see what the difference in the question about the tone and what sound is coming out of them. So we're going to be monitoring all that, all of the tornado sirens within the city. So we are working on that. I didn't know if you knew that.
Yes, but I know for sure some of them were not working. So that's my big issue is that I want to be sure. Thank you.
Chief, also, it's been a while. I've slept since then. But when we added the last siren, there's a difference in the tone and the coverage distance and then the penetration of buildings and all of that.
That is correct. There's a number of things to take into account. Tornado sirens that have a local tone all the way around are much more effective than the tornado sirens that might spin because of the spacing away from this side and this side of the community that is here to ask the way to come back around. Tornado sirens are going to sound for three minutes, and then they pause for three minutes, and they sound for three minutes. So you lose a lot of sound with that. So there are different sirens do different things. It can go into the three sirens that are out in Monah Hills. The one that's in the country club is a smaller siren, has a very small circle. And then West Country Club is another one that's a small circle. Different sirens make different sounds, but you hear different. Actually, I joke with M.C.A. work, I'd really like to put one of those up. But that would, if we could get a right way, yes, that would be probably the best place to put it. Because the sound travels about a mile from the sirens. But that doesn't include construction trees, or anything. If you look seven stories up, everybody would count it. But it was fantastic. But yes, there are different sounds and different penetrations for this particular.
So I do have a motion on the floor.
I'd like to add one here.
Thank you.
I appreciate it. Anyone that would like to second that? Which is a motion directing staff to investigate. It sounds like they are going to. I have a second. Any council discussion regarding that motion? Have you heard none? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, we will get that done. Anybody else?
Helpful tip, if you want my vote, or if you want me to help you. You can attack me all you want. Leave my family out of it, number one. Number two, I think we've really kind of gotten down to ravel on some of this stuff. Try to be constructive. Try to treat people the way you'd want to be treated. Try to use the golden rule. I can only speak for myself, but I would bet that every one of the honorable people sitting up here with me would be about the same way with that. Come after me all you want. Leave my wife and my kids out of it. Don't call anybody a liar. Doesn't do you any good with regard to me and furthering my support on any particular issue that you wish to have. Let's move forward in a positive way. I've served this community for 30 years, and I intend to continue to serve this community. We're not perfect. We're not even close. But I wish that the county would realize that our only effort with them was to provide for public safety. I'm a safety person. The trouble with accidents is the person who makes the mistake is quite often not the person who dies or is seriously injured. Codes and practicing safety routines before they happen in very significant places like a jail is eminently important, and it'll save lives. And I wish we would all do a little bit of a reset here. Because the things that are said about me, fine, but when you go after my family, it hurts. I appreciate it. And I don't appreciate going after Kelvin the way we went after him. I'm proud to be a member of this council, and I'm damn proud of everybody sitting up here, and Tom who's not here. We give our time. We care about every one of you significantly. And I really wish, I've reached the point where I really felt strongly enough because of the few things that have happened in the last week on Facebook, that I would ask the community to please honor our people that serve you. Thank you. Anything else, council?
As an announcement, my sister-in-law's here, but I'll announce it. The NACTP will be having June 10th on June 15th at Hubbard Park, starting at 12:30. And we come out and see what it's all about.
I just wanted to say, yes, there he is. Thanks to our community development director, John Simmons, for putting on another very successful Scott Joplin festival. And I know other staff were involved, but under your leadership and tool each,
And I know other staff were involved, but under your leadership and Toolich, that really comes together every year. And I just sit back and watch it happen. So, I appreciate it. Beyond that, as far as the responses to the public comments from the last meeting, I don't think there was anything in there that warrants an answer or a clarification. Council heard the comments and the remarks and recommendations. So, that's all I have.
All right. Thank you. Now, we'll go ahead and move on to our Girden Welfare section of our agenda. This is a neat opportunity for residents of our beloved city of Sedalia to directly address their council. Before we begin, I'd like to remind everyone of the framework for this segment. Each speaker is requested to step forward, clearly state their name, address, and will be allotted three minutes to present a statement. Please note, this is not a session for dialogue or debate with the council, nor is it a period for questions and answers. It is time for you to make your voice heard, for us to listen, and your statements to be entered into the public record. We ask that all remarks be kept respectful and pertinent to community matters. So, now we'll go and open up the floor. And if you'd like to make a statement, please step to the microphone, state your name and address, and you have three minutes.
Debbie, Kathy, and Chief Earland, you're welcome. I would just like to address the course of people's comments. Unfortunately, when you run public office becoming a western official, you owe yourself up to scrutiny. And I will speak for myself in my reporting. And when it comes to City of Sedalia, our tax dollars, our opinions, it's been very much business. And if you want to sit there and take it personal and accuse people of attacking you and your family or whatever, I have all the documents. I've got all the documents. I know what's going on. You may not like it, but it is what it is and it's business. So, you know all about business. We all know about what's going on. So, I don't really feel sorry for you. You're in the public eye. And no one's attacking Kelvin either. It's business. You're welcome to join the group. You're welcome to join in and have dialogue. Everybody up here is. And that would be great. And I would love that. Please join and let's talk.
Let's do it in person.
Let's do it.
Get in touch. All right. Thank you for your comments. Next?
David, go from sixteen forty eight to drive. I'd just like to see if I have no idea what you're talking about, the Facebook page right now.
I agree.
I would like to say, ask you guys to please consider immediately becoming... You can still post them on YouTube. You can gather your time. You've got to record it as that. But the Facebook thing we're making is so easy for citizens of all ages to do it. It's a free app. It's the most common age amongst the older groups or amongst newer... Especially kids out there amongst the younger groups. But I think in our demographic, it could be a easy thing for you guys to... I heard you. Eventually, thank you guys for looking to the list. And you know there's a lot of people who would appreciate it and be able to participate in the evening. Other than receiving comments allowed, that's my mission, just letting these broadcasts automatically broadcast to my thousand people. You guys can broadcast to everybody. So, please consider that. I find it ironic that Calvin and I asked you about your job performance, what responsibility you took for the bench witness for the last couple of years on the department test. As we give a review of your job performance through this, we're not going to give a comment. I don't think that's right. We asked for that. Are you... I've heard a lot about it as well. I understand the problem. I understand how somebody hires for free. I agree with you there. And I wish you guys would put the same effort into fixing the real problems that we have. And that's not like it was equal to like a church chancellor and training professional people and how they should act and treat people. That's on the performance of what we've seen. But I... We are losing this to the county. Better next week today, I think, pretty bright now. We have a lot about this meeting. And we're going to continue to do that. You guys know what needs to happen. We need to fix the problem. And if you're the council, you're the couriers, step up and replace people who need to be replaced. We're not going to make it very better. We deserve more to be better. I appreciate each and every council member who's taking time to be with us. I think you guys know our group's been very respectful. We've had very good dialogue, very informative, and I appreciate that. Ms. Foster, I don't mind if you're scheduled to be with us. Mayor Dawson, if you refuse to be with us, it's an hour meeting, but we could have some great dialogue in that thirty-three. Please consider that because you gotta talk about talking. That's the time we talk. If we group people, we get together and work on issues. But you guys know the real issues. You know what problems are at. And I appreciate your truly victim. You have the power to do that. You all are like this. And Calvin was one in time. He was kind of like... But you have to hear from him talking at all meetings. But tonight Calvin decided, we don't get it. Does the question about his performance, his response to going to house and places for granted the last two years? That takes you for your time.
Thank you. Up next?
My name is Gary Ilma. I live in eight twenty-one, the Capitol, I just have to do with ninety-seven something. What's that? That's designed from... Reverend McDonald. The call service, does that cover members of the... Honestly? That's just a question. I don't know. It's a bit like a... Is that... So, we think it's what the other nine had to do. That was all you could buy your sense, hard to say, but probably. That's why you bought it, didn't you? I mean, that's... I can... I'm seriously, I really, I'm reaching... So, then, what's a pure point? The bridge is out of control. It's out of our control. Okay? So, the bridge is not all through us. The bridge runs through Sedalia, who doesn't go through? It happens to be out of our control. If it's our bridge, surely isn't it some people in the state of Missouri that fixed up a bridge? As far as for the fire parties, why would we want to continue for the fire parties on this side? With the fireworks for words that roll in? That's things like that. Don't think that's free. Maybe you have to make them. Oh, on the eight thirty, eight thirty-three, the proposal or the dolphin, where you, you know, talk about conflict of interest. Is that... Is that in the old, that you think? I don't know. I don't know what the old is, but I just... Is that in the old that you... They already pay you? So, what is... What's that proposal? If you do have a company, how long are you going to use it? Are you going to... Well, it's just as one issue. But did they get home company? Are you a grand for this same person? Is that not a conflict of interest yet? How long are you going to use yourself?
Yeah. Thank you. All right. Any else?
I'm getting out of your...
Hi, guys. Forty-three, a couple things.
No.
I appreciate you guys, it's a bit over the top, I think. I do understand, you guys are in public office, you do kind of open yourselves up to block the line of the public. But yeah, personally, I don't really know, but when people do post the documents, when people do have information, it keeps you in this one. Okay? Don't worry.
This one up there.
You have the loud voice. I think we all heard you.
Yeah. Where's the podium?
Where's the podium close in there?
Hang on. I'm going to go ahead and have him restart your time. Mr. Shop, you could restart the gentleman's time. I mean, if you could go ahead and restate your name and your address.
I don't...
Correct.
Murphy's law. Did I unplug it? It's push to talk.
Yeah. I see it.
Yeah. It's push to talk. Okay. Uh, yeah. No harassment. Yeah. Great. Okay. I think Olin said something about it in his town hall thing, kind of, that the city doesn't want to own these properties. But there's no openly available list of properties. I mean, put them up. Put them up for a thousand dollars. Put some kind of stipulation where you have to build on it within a certain amount of time. But they're not actually for sale. If you have to track down through Beacon or... You know, you gotta go through county records to find out what actually is for sale. Grand and Wilkerson, Corner Grand and Wilkerson. Don't know if anybody drives by it. There's, I don't know. We've got this all grown out of the corner where the sidewalk used to be. Could we maybe look into that? The guys were right there on Grand. New pavement on Grand tonight. It's great. Take it to work in the morning. Is there just a simple way, like even through go-to-meeting, to just put the audio of the meetings that happened through the week? So, you know, you guys could just throw a phone on the table, hit go-to-meeting, and people will listen to it at work. I'm sure there's people in here right now that are listening to multiple trials going on on YouTube. And so, be free to just hop over and listen to that. Listen to the discussions about the things you guys voted on. Because there's very little discussion about the actual things you're voting on. The actual decisions are made in those meetings and you kind of just check them off here in front of everybody. So, that'd be really great. Is there such a thing as a non-appealable code violation or notice? Like, I've had two people this week send me photos. They got notices of violation for parking of cars that they had just bought, didn't have tags on. So, by city code, you can't have a car without a license plate on it for more than five days. But in the state of Missouri, you can have a car without license plates on it for thirty days after purchase. So, something to look into. That's it. I guess. Is there anything else? No. List of properties for sale. That'd be great. Because I think certain people, especially citizens, would just buy them to retain them. Or maybe their kids in the future or just speculative opportunity. So, yeah. Be way easier than the city owning them. Okay. Thanks.
Thank you. All right. Anybody else?
Zach, would you check that mic again, please? Is it coming through? Okay. But does he have to push to talk?
Yeah.
Tap on it, would you, please? Can you hear...
Sorry. Our technical definitely.
Does she have to hold it down, though?
Yeah.
Okay. Sorry.
Renee Vance, post office, box six ninety-one. Over the last four years, I have been a proud advocate and passionate volunteer for the Sedalia Senior Center and for all the citizens of Pettis County as a silver-haired representative. My recent volunteering also has involved collecting signatures for the Women's Reproductive Healthcare Initiative. That petition drive for a constitutional amendment is a core element of my belief that reproductive rights are basic human rights. It should come as no surprise that the current representative has a very different view on women and equality. Throughout the last legislative session, it became abundantly clear to me that concerns of low-income families, of women, seniors, and the LGBTQ community were not a priority, but sometimes on the hit list. This oversight may stem from the simplest of facts. We were not at the table. As a retired Air Force member, I have had an opportunity to live in many states and countries and worked with a plethora of different people from every imaginable background and delivered consistent, positive results. We need common sense back in our government and the big lobbyists out. Our State House needs some diversity in order to best serve its citizens, and I would be honored to work for Pettis County and Sedalia. I ask for your support and your vote in November.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah. Zach, would you hold the button down?
He's going to hold the button for you, sir, so the microphone will kick on for you.
Um, there, Fisher. I'm a retired training officer, mentality chief of Nevada. I'm a native Sedalia. I remember when I was a kid, on Monday nights, the officer who would run the police department. And I'd go down there and sit in the dispatch office. I lived in the... Fire Department. There's a picture of it. At that time, there were three stations in Sedalia. Then they built Central. And moved Station One into Central. Freeze was for... That was in now. Wait, I... I grew up here in Sedalia, Gregory, from Smith Cotton. And then went to Oklahoma State School of Fire Protection. My last job was as a training officer in Los Favors. I have a national degree. And I'm an executive fire officer, Gregory, from the National Fire Company. I support Sedalia, within a state, you know it. Somebody said Hubbard Park. By the way, on the park rooms and the station could be gone. The chief is also suggesting one in Sedalia Park and closing down. I agree with that a hundred percent. I agree with his plan on five fifty trucks with a utility bed, one having a schedule for one way, one having a compressor to fill air cracks. I'm so proud to see him show up with Scott four point five models. And it's just wonderful. That's what I had. I loved it. I had the first version of one with a pesticide, integrated pesticides. I loved it. I support everything the Sedalia police and fire department does.
All right. Thank you for your comments, sir. All right. Anybody else?
I agree. Oh, we can talk with him after the meeting?
No. I want you to share it then.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes?
Uh, would you share with the audience about the council meetings being put on somewhere else besides Facebook? Remember when we talked about that?
You mean like a livestream or what?
Yeah. Yeah.
I don't want to talk about it.
We talked about putting it on Facebook. And then you told me that it's on some station or something here in Sedalia.
I'm not sure about that.
Okay. Maybe I misunderstood you. Okay. Thanks.
Okay. I will now entertain a motion to adjourn to closed-door session.
Come in.
Make them two.
I don't know what they do.
Yeah, maybe they're, they told us, he's a blank. Guess they didn't want us falling asleep.
I love you. Let's go. So, Rock and Roll gives me, you, you punched it, that's good. This will be a deadlock, this is gonna move.
Completely.
We've had some good stuff lately.
Motion, jury. A motion to second to council discussion. All is in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? In the jury.